We ready on the ride?
Yeah, I'm like...
Ready on the ride?
Ready on the ride?
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Glad you hearty souls in the audience have decided to be with us tonight. Welcome to those who are watching us at home on our TV6, also on our Facebook page. I'm guessing, Jeanie, we are streaming very good, and also on our website, LewisvilleNC.net. Thanks for tuning in to watch your government in action. We'll begin our meeting this evening with an introduction of our council.
Hi, I'm Jeff Singer.
Hi, I'm Ed Smith. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sandra Mock.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Green.
Good evening, Marcy Gallman.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
And yes, I did take that out of order.
Yeah, you threw us a curveball there.
Just wanted to see if you guys were awake this evening. We'll do other introductions in a moment. Beau, you're going to lead us on our invocation, and we'll be followed with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Fred Franklin. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for this evening. We thank you for bringing us thus far safely through the snow, and we ask your continued blessings upon all of those who are clearing roads and parking lots and sidewalks for us. We give thanks for the elected body who makes decisions on behalf of this town. We give thanks for the amazing town staff who makes things run here. We give thanks for the law enforcement officials who keep us safe, and we thank you for the citizens for whom we act and serve. We also give you thanks for the reason for this Christmas season. We hope that we will not forget that as we go through this time. And now, God, as we go through this meeting, we ask for wisdom, courage when necessary, and when this meeting is over, we ask for your safe guidance and guiding hand as we return home. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Also, ladies and gentlemen, is our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Beau Howe. Beau, thank you for that invocation. Our town public information person, Jeanie Taylor, back there on the camera. So if I'm out of focus, it's her fault. We have our Public Works Director George Hauser. We have Mrs. Joyce Walker, our town clerk. Our town finance director is Pam Orell. And welcome to your first council meeting, our new planning director Stacy Talbert. Thank you so much for being here. It was fun meeting your two sons.
Camden.
And Cort...
Colton.
Cameron and Corton. Colton. I'm not going to try to do that again. I'll do it once we're over with. Very good. But welcome, Stacy. I know you're going to be a great addition to our staff, and I think all the council members have had a chance to meet you, and I know just the brief time that you've been working, you've really, I think, demonstrated you're going to fit in well with this crazy crowd that we have here. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, we have an agenda in front of us. I think we have one addition under 10E, and I believe that's the item you would like to add, Hank, correct? And that's the budget amendment for the Bluegrass Festival. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And to explain this for the council, we have a music group in line. The event is not until the fall, but the band does require a 50% deposit. In order to make that deposit and have the option to do that, we have to have the budget amendment to be able to write the check.
Ms. Walker, any additional additions or subtractions from our agenda?
Just the one item regarding...
Well, we'll do that during the consent portion. Very good. Accept a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Singer makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. On the consenting agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to remove item three, which is approval of the joint council planning board minutes, our joint meeting that we had back on November 3rd. Mrs. Walker is still waiting through that, and we'll get those at our January meeting. So with that, Mr. Manager, any addition to the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Very good. Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Pam, would you like to introduce our guest, Mr. Monty Pendry, who I've been calling Monty Python all week?
I'm sure that's never happened to him before.
Yes, Monty Pendry is here from Gibson &amp; Company, and he's going to present the audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2018.
Good evening. My name is Monty Pendry, and I am a partner with Gibson &amp; Company and did perform the audit for the current year. We have completed the audit of the financial statements of the town of Lewisville for the year ended June 30th, 2018. The audit report has been submitted to the local government commission, and they have approved it. Tonight, I want to give you a very brief overview of the town's fiscal year and the results of our audit. In the audit report, our audit opinion reads as follows: We have audited the financial statements of the town of Lewisville as of June 30th, 2018, and for the year then ended in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and also according to government auditing standards. In our opinion, based on our audit, we find that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, and the results of operations of the town of Lewisville. This is what we call an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can issue. During the audit, we found the books and the records to be complete and in good order, and all the counts were properly reconciled. The financial statements also show that actual revenues came in over budget and expenditures came in under budget for all funds. The town as a whole had total assets and deferred outflows of resources of $18,213,333 at June 30th, 2018, and that's primarily composed mostly of cash of $8,92596 and power bill cash of $635,601. And your capital assets, which is all your land, buildings, and equipment, net of depreciation Total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources were $1,261,929, which also includes your long-term debt, which you owe to the bank of $840,004. So the town ended the year with a net position, which is all your assets minus your liabilities, of $16,759,404. The increase in net position, or net income, if you will, for this year was $880,478. Now focusing on more of the general fund on its own, at June 30th, the general fund had total assets of $7,116,577. Liabilities in the general fund totaled $259,313. Taking your assets less your liabilities, leaving you with a total fund balance in the general fund of $6,497,032. Balance increased this year by $1,132,026, which is the profit or the net income for the general fund. Part of the increase in the general fund came from the $626,712 transfer from the Shallowford Road Roundabout Capital Projects Fund when that fund was closed out during the fiscal year. That money was loaned to the project fund by the general fund to cover costs that were eventually reimbursed under the STPDA grant. The remainder increase of $505,314 was the result of revenues exceeding expenditures in the general fund. Of the $6,497,032 total fund balance, $5,405,088 is unassigned or unrestricted. This is 131% of your general fund expenditures. The local government commission likes to see at least 8% cushion there, so the town is well above that at 131%. Current year transfers to your reserves totaled $415,000. Reserve balances totaled $1,926,909, which consists of your stormwater capital reserve of $328,986, your GWR, ROW capital reserve of $675,831, your sidewalks, bike paths, greenways capital reserve of $45,497, and your municipal buildings land capital reserve I know that was a very brief overview of the financial statements, but based on this report, we feel that the town of Lewisville has a very strong balance sheet and healthy capital reserve funds, and we feel that the town is in excellent financial condition. I'd like to thank you once again for allowing us to serve as the auditor for the town of Lewisville. I would like to also thank Pam for all her help during the audit process. She does a great job. And with that, is there any questions I can try to answer on anything concerning the audit or the financial statements?
Council members, any questions for Mr. Pendry or Ms. Orell? Very good. That was a lot of numbers that you came at us. If I can highlight just a couple of them. We have an annual budget that's about $4.4 million. Keep in mind, that is the operation of the town for each year. But over the course of time, we have been able to put into our savings accounts, so to speak, which is what we call our unrestricted reserve, that we can spend on anything that we feel that is important to the town, and restricted reserves, which are capital accounts, and that's for sewer and sidewalks and those types of projects. We currently have almost $2 million in our capital funds, and we have almost $5.5 million in our unrestricted reserves. What this all says is that your town is in very, very good financial shape. We can weather a difficult downturn. We can weather a challenging financial crisis. We have money to spend on things like road projects, where oftentimes a project will come up and a municipality will be asked to match, or to provide a 20% match on funding. Some communities don't have those reserves and can't take advantage of those road projects. I suspect over the last 10 or 12 years, we have upwards of $18 or $20 million in road projects that we've been able to participate in at a 20% level, but the return to the residents of Lewisville has been roughly 80% to 20%. It's a pretty good investment on our part. The key number there that I think is important and a credit to our town staff is that we have increased our net assets by, not our net assets, because that only includes our property, our actual cash assets by $500,000 this year. In other words, in this year's budget, we're able to achieve $500,000 more than what we projected we were going to achieve based upon our revenues and our expenditures. Did I say that right, Pam?
That's correct.
Very good. Well, if that's not enough numbers, I hope just the few minutes that I took to emphasize those, we'll just point out that your council, not only this council and the councils before it, have been, I believe, really good stewards of how we spent your money and how we saved your money, and we're in a great position to move forward on the challenges that are coming forward in 2019, 2020. Council members, anything you'd like to add? Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, I'd like to also reiterate that in October, at our October meeting, we passed a financial policy that we've never had in place before. As was mentioned back when we were having discussions about that, we did not get to where we are today by happenstance or luck, but we had things that were here, there, different places, that with our town staff pulling it all together in a comprehensive financial policy, I think that we can go forward with the guidance of it and maintain what we currently have that you were just mentioning just a moment ago.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Anyone else?
Another thing I'd like to add, too, to point out to the residents, is because we've done that, what we have not accumulated, which you see other municipalities do, is a tremendous amount of debt. And so, it's one thing to have a bunch of money in the bank, but then owe, you know, a whole bunch of money. We got a bunch of money in the bank, and we don't owe very much at all. And so, it's really something to be proud of.
Very good. Council members, any other comments?
I think the one thing that jumped out at me is 131% cushion.
Yeah.
I think that was, you know, that's pretty nice. I mean, that is nice.
Yeah, the local government recommends 8%.
Right.
And y'all's is 131%, so you're well above.
Who would you guess the average is with municipalities?
It seems like the, I didn't look that up before I came, but I think the average is like, the local government puts out the information based on the town size or population, and your town size, I think, is probably right around 70-some percent.
Okay.
Which I think reflects back to what we have in our policy that we just adopted. I don't remember the exact figures, but that's somewhere right in the range of what we've adopted for our policies, and we're well above that.
Well above that.
Yep.
Ms. Orell, do we need to formally accept this audit report?
Yes.
Very good. Council members?
Motion to accept the financial report?
Second. Mr. Singer makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we're up to the point of the meeting where we welcome your comments. This is the first of two opportunities to address the council. We have two people signed up to speak, Terry and Jennifer Simons. And please come up, state your name, give us your address, and share with us whatever thoughts that you think we need to hear.
Can I present you all with some pictures? Can I do that?
Picture both sides of the slip sheet saying the map of the property in question.
I got a lot here I could talk about, but I kind of got it all condensed down into the three minutes I was told I would have, so. Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Terry Simmons. This is my wife, Jennifer. We live at 7500 Pine Trails Road. I have lived there for 24 years. In between our house and our neighbors is a narrow piece of property with a creek on it. This is a right-of-way that nobody technically owns. We don't own it, neither does Lewisville, but they tell me it is considered private property. Our road is like the letter V, and our property sits at the bottom of the V. Most of our neighborhood's rainwater is diverted with culverts under their driveways and dumps into this creek on both sides of the road. This past July, between eight to 10-foot of creek bank fell off at one time. Now, the edge of the creek bank is within three foot of our driveway and has encroached over past our property line. Not only is it going to take out our driveway, it is a serious and dangerous situation. The pictures I gave you do not describe the magnitude of this situation. It is a huge sinkhole. If you put a straight edge from the top of our driveway over the creek, it would be at least a 15-foot drop-off or more to the bottom of the creek. If my wife or I were to run a vehicle off in it, it would probably kill us. I have contacted everybody that I can think of, including town of Lewisville, looking for help. What I have been told is that when this neighborhood was developed, the property owner was made to deem this section of land of right-of-way. After 25 years, and if nothing was done with this right-of-way, the ownership of this property would revert back to the original owner, which I have been told to be Floyd Mock of Mock Tire. I talked to an attorney about this, and he said that this is such a gray area in the law that I would never have any recourse from the Mock family, and it probably wouldn't even be fair anyway after 40-some years. I have been told there is state's funding for such situations, but first, we would have to take ownership of the property, then we would have to apply, and the likelihood of being approved is very slim. If we did get approved, they would pay very little, and the rest would be on us, and they say that the state is running about three years behind. Our driveway will not last three more years. I have talked with North State Environmental, a local creek restoration company, and without putting pen to paper, they estimated the cost of repair no less than $42,000, but once they got involved, the cost might be much more. My wife and I are at wits' ends about worrying about this. I have lost many nights' sleep and continue to do so, thinking about what we should do and what the final outcome will be. I get the same response from everybody I talk to. It is either, oh, well, it is what it is, or it sucks to be you. We paid $100,000 for our house, and it blows my mind to think we would be asked to take out a loan for 40, 50, $60,000 or more to pay for something that we don't own and we don't want to own it. This is not normal home maintenance, like having a dead tree cut down, having a roof put on your house, et cetera. This is major. My wife and I are here tonight to ask, no, to beg, the town of Lewisville Council, town council, to consider taking ownership of this property and getting this thing resolved. We feel that this should be a town issue and not a citizen issue. As it stands right now, our house value is zero. No one would buy our house in this condition, and it's a dangerous situation. At some point, our driveway could cave in as we drive across it, so please, please consider what we have asked of you and get us some help. Thank you.
Mr. Simons? Yes, Mr. Sir. Mr. Manager, we have had someplace in my recollection, Mr. Franklin, you have a steel trap mine on these types of things. We have had some discussions about this piece of property, haven't we? Or is this new to the council?
I think this is new to the council. Mike, I do not remember this. Pine Tree, Pine Trails is off of Yakkenville Road.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to replace it.
Yeah, pretty much in the Iowa Fire Department.
Yeah. Looking at the map that you provided, I somewhat believe that this was intended at some point in time to be a stub street, looking at it.
That's what it looks like.
I mean, that's just the first blush. It's why it was that, you know...
And I think, and that's the same difference as a right-of-way? Or am I wrong about...
Well, that's, I mean, whoever developed the development, probably at that time, obviously, was forced by the county commissioners to provide a right-of-way for a stub street to adjoining property.
Right, right.
It's where it probably all got started 25 years ago.
Yes.
So from that standpoint, Mike, I don't know that, you know, it's, I don't know what the status of it is, but looking at it, that sure looks like a stubs creek to me.
Yep. Manager, could you do a little research for us and get a little history? And, you know, I would like to say that we have an immediate solution for you. I'm not sure that we do, and I know you've heard that from a lot of people you've gone to, but, Mr. Manager, if you will maybe caucus a bit with our Public Works Director and maybe our attorney, and say what we have that we might be able to offer as a remedy or at least direction for a remedy.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
That would be good. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. Obviously, I don't know about the other members, but I had no...
I'm free to come out and look for it, because the pictures, seriously, the pictures don't serve a justice. It's frightening.
I promise you, I will visit the site and take a look at it myself.
I felt bad for him. I do.
Can I ask a question?
Anything else you have to do for us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for taking the time.
Can I ask one question, please? Is there, is this just, I see the water kind of in the background. Is there a stream there running all the time, or is this just runoff when we get a storm?
There's always a tiny little bit of water running, you know, but as more, I can, well, actually, some investigations, that creek is not even named. They can only find a creek name.
Okay.
So to really, it's more of a drainage ditch, is kind of the way I see it, you know.
But I assure you, it ends up in Mill Creek and comes through my farm.
Yeah. Well, I was just asking because, you know, if it's a stream, I think that we'd be able to maybe get DNR involved, but it doesn't sound like it really is, so, you know, ride of luck on that.
That's why it does the water come. It comes down...
From the other side of the road, up under the road, yeah.
Is there a pipe under the road?
Yes, yes, it's a culvert. And actually, when it comes under the road, it drops maybe three or four foot, and ever since I've been there, it's been like a pool. And you know how it gets anymore, since you were a child. We don't get rains anymore. We get these heavy storms. And when it dumps two, four, six inches of rain in a matter of hours, I can go out there afterwards, and that water's just swirling, like a whirlpool. And me, I'm not an engineer, but I mean, it seems to me like that swirling water's undercutting that bank, and that's where that top's falling off, and that's why I lost so much. All that rain we had back in the end of July and August, tremendous amount of rain, one fell swoop. Of course, there's some bushes on that picture. They're no longer there neither. They're down in the creek. I mean, the whole thing is eroding away.
The phone box has fallen in the creek. Our phone line went dead because the phone box also slid into the creek.
Telephone pole, you said telephone pole. They had to come out and move the pole. It is just, it's just tragedy.
There are trees that are going to fall on our house.
This is big as this area right here. It's just, it's just massive.
And all the roots are exposed and all the trees that could easily fall, and it's very dangerous.
We will have a staff caucus on it and have a report back from our January briefing. That's the first Thursday in January. Please feel free to attend that.
Awesome.
And we'll have some discussion at that point.
See, something that's, like I said, like I've said in my little speech here, is, you know, it kind of benefits the whole neighborhood. It's a drainage for everybody. I just happened to buy the house at the bottom of the hill. Again, hindsight's 2020. And don't buy a house in the basement neither.
Thank you so much. Good presentation.
Thank you, folks. Anybody else wish to speak at our public forum? Anyone wish to speak? Okay? Very good. Ms. Walker, you have an appointment that we have to make this evening?
Yes. Hold on one second, if you will, please. I need to get people's names. I will put it in your notes.
Email this.
Sure. I'll give you some info. Let me take yours. Thank you. Okay, yes, I'm sorry. We wanted to make sure we could get that in the minutes, and we all have a reference point. We have appointments for District 4 for the Willow Run Municipal Service District Board. There are two applicants, Denise Chris and Elaine Harddecker. I'll turn it over to Mr. Perkins if he needs to provide any information to you, but I have given you a voting slip at your position. If you have any kind of tie, then I have a second slip over there. So I'll collect those if you don't want...
We need some pens.
Manager, anything to add?
We got a new pen.
Just checking one person.
Acting Chairman of the MSD, Jeffrey Rawls, and myself did interview these two candidates. I will say that both of them are fine. They both qualify, and Mrs. Chris has prior experience, but other than that, we really don't have a recommendation for either one of them.
Thank you.
I'm going to hang out with Pam for a second.
Abby, laying that, Ms. Walker. We'll move on through the agenda. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no event chair hearings. We have no site pan amendments. We have no unfinished business. Moves us into our new business category. As we discussed in our briefing, we had the annual performance review of our town manager. Mr. Singer, Mr. Smith, and myself reviewed not only your evaluations that you submitted, but also his performance report and against his goals for 2018, and we are recommending to you that the manager receive the budgeted 3% increase this year. One and a half percent of that is delivered as salary, and one and a half percent of that is delivered as a bonus.
Retroactive to December 1st.
Retroactive to December 1st, yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Mock makes a motion to approve. Ms. Gallman seconds it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. You'll stay around another year.
Thank you.
Okay. George, you want to talk about, please, our Sonic Wall? And again, they have half-price shakes after 8 o'clock.
What this entails is a, the Sonic Wall device is a security device for the town's network. It's been on the job since the building was constructed and occupied. We've updated and upgraded phone systems, the internet, and as we've gone along, and especially when we put the phone system in, we put in new ethernet switches, which they run much faster today than they did years ago when the phone system was put in. Same thing with our wireless access points. Same thing with the Sonic Wall. So we've pretty much upgraded and switched out most of these components in the Sonic Wall, just by its age and whatever. It's the last piece that we need to get replaced in order to make the system run more efficiently and actually give us more security over our internet and network. So this $1,880 is for replacing that piece of equipment and having it installed.
Any questions for our Public Works Director? entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Singer makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ms. Walker, you have an updated calendar.
In everyone's packet, and I have to apologize to the world tonight, we have regressed and gone back to paper tonight. At any rate, you have in your packet a copy of the 2019 meeting schedule, and I just wanted to point out a couple of items. Those things that are highlighted are either a holiday, or if you see an asterisk beside a date, that means that we had to change a date for one of the organizations, one of which is council for the July meeting. Also, I wanted to point out that in 2018, Public Safety met every other month. For 2019, they are changing and will be meeting every month. So, I have before you all of the meeting dates for council, as well as all the boards and committees for your approval.
Very good. Any questions for Mrs. Walker? We need to adopt this. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion in unison. Ms. Mock and Ms. Gollman make the second. We'll give it to Ms. Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Ms. Walker, do you have our results yet?
I do. We have a new member, and that is Denise Chris.
Very good.
Results will be in the minutes in January.
Very good. Thank you very much. Welcome to our MSD, Ms. Chris. It is an important committee of the, of the town. You have responsibility for the distribution of about 4.5 cents on your tax rate set up for the MSD to maintain the lakes and the dams in the Rennie Mead Willamette subdivision. So, it's an important group for you to be part of, and we welcome your expertise there, and thank you for serving. Hank, you want to talk to us, please, about our town survey?
Yes. Next item is Resolution 2018077. This is awarding a contract and authorizing a town-wide survey to Insight Research Incorporated in an amount of $17,680. And as we discussed this at briefing, that is a scope that will attempt to send a survey for their submission from every household in Lewisville, which is approximately 5,200.
And this is going to be reviewed by the appropriate committees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we'll come back to the council for our review as well before?
Yes, sir, it will.
Okay. Any questions for the manager?
And, and this is leading up to the 2020 Comprehensive Plan update, correct?
Yes, that's, that is one. And the other part is, is to gauge overall customer satisfaction as a benchmark comparison against the one done four years ago, and also to give us guidance towards our Parks and Recreation programs in the future.
Entertain a motion, council?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Mock makes the motion. Ms. Gollman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Mr. Manager, you want our budget amendment on our Bluegrass Festival, please?
Yes, we have ordinance before you this evening for consideration, 2018064. This would be amending Budget Ordinance 2018001 in an amount of $3,000 to place a deposit for the 2019 Bluegrass Festival band. Councilman Zinger, working with our Stacy Howard, who is our events programmer, has found a, a good band for the next fall. Their overall cost is around $6,000. Overall, when I say this, it is $6,000, but the cost of the festival itself is not going up. We're just going for a larger band instead of a lot of smaller bands. So, when we say this, it's not going to be any more expensive than you've seen in the past next fall. The key is, is this, this particular band needs a 50% deposit placed essentially very soon, so that we can get them under contract and make sure that they are still available in the fall when the, when the Bluegrass Festival is in, in place. So, that's what we've got right now. We cannot write a check for the deposit until we have a budget amendment and the money is in the, in the line item for it. So, that's where we are right now.
And we are going to, the reason we're asking for this authorization tonight, well, we won't write the check at this particular point, because we do want to run Mr. Zinger's and Ms. Howard's recommendation by the Parks and Rec Committee on Monday night, and make sure that they're in concurrence with this as an appropriate addition to the Bluegrass Festival. I'm sure they'll have no problems with it.
Yeah.
But as we always do.
Yeah, this will be reviewed with the Parks and Rec on Monday.
Yeah, make sure that our, that our committees have an active role on the hand and, and helping guide our, our events. So, assuming that they will approve that on Monday, then you will issue the, the retainer, the deposit on Tuesday.
That's correct.
And we'll have a terrific band.
Oh, yeah, they're great. They're really good. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know last year, this is, I guess we'll be going into our third year. Last year, or this year, excuse me, this year, the overall day became longer, we had more bands. Are we still looking for the venue time about the way it was this year, or just a shorter period with one band? Jeff, you've been more involved.
We, we felt like that, you know, the first year that we did it, we had three bands, and it was a shorter amount of time, and it worked very, very well. Very well. So, we went ahead and expanded it. But that just seemed to be, it still went well, but, but not quite as well, and I, and we, we really felt like it was because it was so long, it's a Saturday in the fall, people have a lot of stuff to do. So, what we decided to do was come back and shorten it up. And so, I think the way we've got it set now is it'll start at 4:00. There'll be a band that will open for these folks, and then these will be the main headliner.
Okay.
Any additional questions? We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. We look forward to Parks and Rec recommendation on that. Hank, you want to bring us up to date on our events at Shallowford Square, other than snow removal?
Yeah, I think this is going to be events at Shallowford Square and town holidays. There is, for December, and I guess what's remaining of December, and then January, we only have four dates to, to pay attention to. Town offices will be closed on Monday, December 24th, and Tuesday, December 25th. Will also be closed on January 1st in recognition of New Year's Day holiday. And then moving into later in, in January, on Monday, the 21st, we will be closed in observance of MLK Junior's holiday birthday.
Very good. How about updating us on the actions we took at our briefing, please?
Yes, sir. At the briefing, we handled two, one ordinance and one resolution. They were both related. They had to do with Arbor Run Storm Drain Improvements. The first was Ordinance 2018062, amending Budget Ordinance 2018001 in an amount of $42,630 to contract with Russell Construction for Arbor Run Drive Storm Drain Improvements. And then we also have Resolution 2018075, awarding the contract to Russell Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $42,630 for storm drain improvements on Arbor Run Drive. And then, other things that we did, we approved Ordinance 2018063, amending Budget Ordinance 2018001 in an amount of $1,225 for legal review by MuniCode for 2018 Session Law on criminal penalty listings.
Ladies and gentlemen, these were items that we took action on at our briefing, which is the first Thursday of every month. Generally speaking, we, we report those out at our regular council meeting, which is tonight, so that the public has ample opportunity, and only to hear them during our briefing, but also those who are used to only tuning in for our town council meeting when it's broadcast, has a report of those expenditures, of those action items that we took at that time. Mr. Manager, your report.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have to, no, we're good. Report.
Yep. We had the rescheduled Lewisville Civic Club's Annual Christmas Parade, the 35th. It was supposed to be last Sunday. It was postponed for weather. That has been postponed. It will be this Sunday, December 16th, at 3:15 PM in the afternoon. There will be a charitable 5K race preceding the parade that begins at 2:45 PM.
We're pretty confident of that?
At this point, that's the plan. Yep.
Did you say that Bo Half is your grand marshal this year?
Excellent.
Aww.
If we have a parade, Bo, it'll be great. If not, it'll be because of the grand marshal that we chose.
There you go.
It is worth pointing out that, that this is not our parade, it's the Civic Club's parade. We are, have been in contact with the organizer and the, I guess, the person heading it. They feel confident that everything will be fine by Sunday afternoon, so that's the way we're proceeding with it.
Great. Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, you are aware, unless you've been in Florida for the last week, we had a unusual amount of snow that fell over the weekend and through the first part of the week. 14 inches, I believe, is the, is the average that fell in Lewisville. If you put that in perspective, last January, we had seven inches of snow that fell, and it was a real challenge cleaning. Well, we've doubled that. Frankly, I think our folks did a fabulous job. They were out there salting and brining early on, and they were plowing consistently Sunday and Monday and Tuesday, and I think did some, according to the fries, did some cleanup today on their road over across the street. It was a monumental task. There was a lot of snow. I know some of you folks are saying, gosh, I have snow pushed up in front of my driveway. There wasn't a place to put it. You know, we had, we had so much snow, we had to move it someplace to get the roads open. So, we apologize for that inconvenience, but when you take 14 inches of snow and you move it one foot, you get 28 inches of snow. So, you can see how quickly it adds up on it. So, thank you for your patience. I know maybe we took a little longer for some of the roads over other, other the roads, and some we missed and had to come back for, but thank you so much for your patience and your understanding. George, how about giving us an update, please, on, on our, on our activities?
And just to echo some of your remarks, I'll just go for this little brief review. Forecast to be around 12 inches. We received between 14, 18, 18 inches of snow on Sunday. Our last big snow, as you pointed out, was on January 17th of 2018. And a typical snowfall for our area is about one to two inches. Although the snowstorm did not last long, we received a lot of snow in a relatively short period of time. And to exacerbate the situation, we did have low temperatures at night, and the wind was up, and that helped lower the temperature even more. The streets were salted, which proved to be a very good move on the part of the contractor. Because the temperatures didn't get too low, it was able, when the sun came up and the, and the temperature rose, the snow was not bonded to the asphalt. So, it was, it was much easier to push, and that helped a lot. But just because the sheer volume of the snow, it was much slower for them to push it. They couldn't, couldn't go too fast with that. But like I said, Mother Nature was kind during the day, especially with the temperatures coming up, where it would actually help loosen the snow. The roads shaded by trees still prove to be a, a challenge sometimes, just simply because the sun cannot get to them. And the, the biggest help there is just during the daytime when the, when the temperature rises. And because this was not a common snow, it was much more difficult to clear some of the, the roads. But delays in service occurred, but it did not mean that it was a denial of service. So, and as much as we would have liked to have cleaned all the roads in one day, just logistically speaking, it just couldn't happen because of the amount of snow, and we have four trucks that, that's doing the service, so. And as the mayor said, we apologize about the, the snow that was left in the driveways, but it's got to go somewhere. And then just have to ask the property owners just to bear with us and just try to dig out the best that you can. The streets were cleared neighborhood by neighborhood, starting with the main thoroughfares, and then the side streets and cul-de-sacs and dead ends. This process was repeated until all the streets were addressed, which did take several days. And it's very difficult for these tandem dump trucks to get into a cul-de-sac or even a dead-end road and, and try to get turned around. So, there were times that people may have seen a truck go part the way into a cul-de-sac or at a dead-end or whatever, and have to turn around or, or back out, because they don't want to get hung up and get stuck. And so, but they will get back, or did get back to those areas as soon as the Mother Nature would allow them to and could actually push the snow. Overall, I think that the contractor did do a good job, and we did receive a lot of compliments. And of course, we're going to get a, a few complaints as well, but we're addressing those, and we had a few mailbox, mailboxes that got damaged, and we're addressing those as well. So, overall, I think we did, did do a pretty good job on this. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
I've got a question, not necessarily along those lines of thought there, but I was noticing on Shallowford Road, the way the snow was plowed, the majority of the storm drain inlets are covered now unless they have melted today. But it, yeah, as of yesterday, when I was paying attention to it, is, I'm concerned about the impact of an inch and a half of rain that's getting ready to fall on us. If that rain cannot get into those storm drains because they're occluded by the piled-up snow, have you given any thought to making sure that those storm drains are cleared along Shallowford Road so that they can go into the proper?
Generally, generally what happens, unless it's frozen, it, the, the rain will find its way.
So, you're willing to gamble on that, then?
Um, I wouldn't say gamble so much. But, but there's no way, and I mean, and you're pretty much talking about on the state-maintained roads.
I recognize that.
So, that would be something that I would, that I could take up with DOT. I, I don't think, I've never seen them in the past come out and remove snow. But typically, when the, it starts melting or the water, we get rainwater, if you were to pull it back some, I know I've, I've seen this before, where the water will actually still follow the curb line. So, I, like I said, I can contact DOT and see what.
Well, I, I know that, that it is a state-maintained road. I recognize that. But I do know that we always budget to sweep the road after the Christmas parade. Okay? So, you know, we, we have spent money on Shallowford, Shallowford Road. I'm just concerned that water that would otherwise be going down a storm drain is going to get diverted to some other place that is not readily acceptable to take that storm water in this instance. And I'm thinking that if we were to take a shovel, and not necessarily shovel it off of the storm drain itself, but to knock down what's there and open up that storm drain before we start getting this heavy rain, might be beneficial. So, I'll, I'll, I'll watch it over the weekend myself and see what happens.
I would, I would think with as rapidly as the snow is melting, if we had an issue, if there's a place for an issue, we'd be able to tell right now, because it would be pooling or whatever, and it's not. I know there's one in front of my office, and it's completely covered and working great. So, anyway.
We'll keep an eye open. We'll keep an eye open. If it poses a hazard, I'm sure we'll call the DOT, and they'll come out with their picks and shovels and get it, get it squared away. But thank you for your concern, Mr. Franklin. Any other questions for George? And related to this, we've had a lot of questions about garbage and recycling collections, and I think the manager sent out a phone call to all of our residents. If you were, if your, if your regular day was Monday, sorry about this, but we couldn't get back to you, so it's going to be next Monday before Waste Management makes that, makes that pickup. And they'll pick up both recycling and garbage on that day. And if you have an abundance of garbage that didn't fill up your, your, that filled up your, your container, wouldn't fit in your container, set it on top of it, set it beside it, and, but wait until the morning, if you would, please, and they'll come out and they'll take some extra bags as well. If your pickup was today, yesterday, today, or tomorrow, obviously, they bumped it today. So, they picked up Wednesday's today, pick up today's tomorrow, and pick up Friday's on Saturday. If you followed all this so far, you've done very, very well. But I think that, in essence, is kind of the plan. We're sorry for the inconvenience, but like we say again, the trucks could just not get on the roads because of the amount of snow that was there. Very good. George, you want to get back up again and give us a quick update on Arbor Run?
We approved the contract. I've been in contact with the contractor. There was a special pipe that had to be manufactured or processed in order to make this work. It has been ordered. Unfortunately, it will not, he will not have everything back that he needs to complete the repair before the end of the year, which was, I was hoping that that would happen. After the first of the year, he should have his pipe in and should be able to go out and make the repairs, put in the catch basin and the pipe in order to de-water that area. I've also been in contact with the paver and he's given me some numbers to come in. We plan on, it's about 570 some feet, I believe, from Lewisville Clemens Road into the development where we're going to stop. But we're planning on taking out all of the asphalt down to the rock base and inspect what's going on there. It's been reported that there was a dump area in the area where we're experiencing the low point. And it's settled. And pretty much, we want to get in there and look and see what we might be able to do as far as undercutting and bridging. And hopefully, we can get all that accomplished not too far into the new year.
Any questions for George on Arbor Run? For all you folks that live in Arbor Run and Oak Grove, and this was not a simple paving job and this was not a simple, let's put some fill in the potholes. The roadbed is collapsing. The drainage system there is collapsing. The water is pooling. It is a major engineering undertaking. And I think when we first started discussing this, the prospect of the cost in doing it was such that we asked our Public Works Director to go back and see if he could find some other options because it was considerably more expensive than I think the option that we finally have come up with. So again, our apologies to those folks that live in that area. It is a, it was a real challenge to engineer this because there are utilities under the road that we have to work around and we have to rip up the road all the way down to the sub-bass, the rock base. And it's going to be quite a project. So apologize for the length of time it's taken us, but know that you're going to get a solution that hopefully will fix it and not just patch it for the next seven or eight months. Any questions for George? Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at the second time in our meeting that if you wish, you can come address the council on anything that may be of interest to you. If you'd like to do that, please come forward. All six of you? I think we've probably done a pretty good job talking this evening. Very good. If there's nobody to come forward, council members, comments?
I have one. Just wanted to kind of share this to encourage everybody. I recently met someone last week, or maybe it was the week before, who moved here from South Carolina to Lewisville. And they love it here. And it was interesting, her first comment was, well, as soon as I drove through it, I knew I wanted to live here. That, you know, for the folks at home and the folks that come here, you know, we spend a lot of time on planning and zoning. That's what planning and zoning does. Makes people drive through town and go, I want to move here. The second thing that she said was, now, they've only been here since June or July, the community in Lewisville is like none other. They've only been here that short a time and they know it. And that, the best part of Lewisville is its people. And when that kind of stuff happens, you know, I just am proud. I'm proud to be a Lewisville citizen and even prouder to serve. And so I just pass it along because I don't know, I think sometimes we can just take it all for granted. You know, we live here and we kind of, and this is just the way it is. But it is a special, special place. And so I was just very, very encouraged by that and I just want to pass that on.
Thank you, Mr. Zinger. Council members, anything else? Well, we wish you on behalf of the town council, the town staff, all the people who work hard for you every day, we wish you the most joyous holiday season, a very, very Merry Christmas, a healthy, safe and prosperous New Year. And hug your family, say hello to your friends, take some time for yourselves, and we'll see you back here in January. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Mock makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Merry Christmas.